... anymore. There is an agenda posted in the back hallway if you want to see where your item is, and we have three items on: old business, Pipkin private accessway permit; new business, Daw Road Extension Private Road Review; and the third item is Crotto Private Accessway Permit. Before we get started, I'd like to present the minutes of the previous meeting from January 20, 2009, and ask the board if they've had a chance to review it. Good evening, Tom.
Hello?
Sorry. Barbara?
I have two weenie corrections. First page, line, well, the top at six, I think, six. Mrs. Schenkel, corporate nominations for Board Chair, and it says, "Mr. Richardson." It should be Mrs. Richardson. Did you pick that up?
I did pick that up, yes.
Okay. And then on page three, line eight, "The sewer service area has been approved." It should be "had been approved," really very significant, but...
Any other motion, corrections, amendments, changes, typos?
Motion to accept.
Motion made by Tom Dolan, seconded by Beth Richardson. All in favor? Next item on the agenda, Pipkin Private Accessway Permit. Alan Pipkin is requesting a private accessway permit to create a second lot at 22 East Monroe, Town Map U-27, Lot Four, Section 17-7-9, Private Accessway Permit, Public Hearing. If the applicant could step up to the podium, introduce himself and make his presentation.
Okay, great. Good evening. My name is Jim Netto from Netto Land Surveying in Portland, and this is Steve Blase, a professional engineer from Link Consulting Engineers of South Portland. We were in a couple of months ago. We believe we've made some good progress on this site here. We've had some comments that we have addressed, but I believe we should first probably refresh everybody about what we're trying to accomplish here, first of all. My first question is, we do have sets of our revised plan similar to this here that we're only prepared and corrected based on the comments that we got, and I didn't know if you folks wanted to...
So we don't have those?
No.
What kind of corrections are there?
There are minor corrections, but we just wanted to make sure that you had them if you wanted to see them.
Are these corrections that are responding to a letter from Steve Harding of Osteen Associates?
In yours.
Yes. And what I would suggest is, I mean, the board, after the public hearing this evening, would be ready to take a motion for approval, and I believe the draft motion includes a condition that the plans would have to be revised per the town engineer's comments. So I would act as if those plans have not been submitted.
Right.
And then after there's a vote, if you want to turn them into me, I can get them checked to see if you've met the conditions.
Okay. As if they were submitted afterwards, that's fine.
Okay.
You could just make a brief presentation to refresh our...
Sure. The site is at 22 East Monroe. It is a current, one-unit, single-family home. There's enough acreage on the parcel to create a second lot. The one thing that this second lot or proposed lot is deficient on is frontage, as well as legal access, and that is why we're creating Pipkin Way, to create frontage and access to this rear parcel, Parcel A. There is a legal non-conforming unit on Parcel B right now. Both parcels comply with the minimum space in both area requirements. We have had some comments as far as general grading, drainage of the site, site distances, et cetera. I think that's probably it. Pretty basic site.
Okay. You're all set?
Yes.
Okay. Having heard from the applicant, I'd like to open the public hearing, please. Anyone wishing to address the proposal of proposed private accessway and land division for Pipkin Way, if you could step up to the podium, identify yourself, and we'll hear your comments. Going once, going twice, anyone wishing to be heard, close up a portion of the hearing, and open up the floor to comments from the board or questions from the board or from the company. Barbara?
The only question I have, as the attorney had a chance to look at the maintenance agreement...
Yes, and I believe I forwarded comments. He had a couple of just minor changes, or he was okay.
That was tonight.
This would have been forwarded to you at least a week ago.
Yes, I didn't see them. So he was comfortable then with the maintenance agreement, Maureen?
Yes, that is my understanding.
Okay. Did anybody else read that, since I didn't miss it?
Yeah.
I didn't...
It was sent days ago, I think.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Anyone else?
You ready for motion?
I am ready for motion.
Findings of motion, findings of fact. Alan?
Alan Pipkin is requesting a private accessway to create a new lot located at 22 East Monroe, which requires review under Section 1979 Private Accessways. Two, the town engineer has reviewed the plans, recommended that additional information be provided to assure construction consistent with the approved plans. Three, the turnaround, which is required by the private accessway standards, is not located on the lot created by the private accessway permit. Four, the application substantially complies with Section 1979 Private Accessways and Section 1983 Resource Protection Regulations. Therefore, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Alan Pipkin for a private accessway to create a new lot located at 22 East Monroe be approved, subject to the following conditions. One, that the plans be revised to comply with the recommendations of the town engineer in his letter dated 2909, paragraphs three and five. Two, that the applicant submit appropriate easement restriction language to preserve the proposed turnaround and the right for Lot A to use the turnaround in a form acceptable to the town attorney. That's separate from the maintenance agreement, correct? Point three, that the above conditions be met prior to signing the plan and recording in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds.
Seconds?
Second.
Motion having been made by Elaine Falander and seconded by Beth Richardson. Any debate on the motion? Hearing none. Call her all, all in favor of the motion. All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Daw Road Extension Private Road Review.
Good evening. My name is Nick Tamero, and I currently live in Cape Elizabeth. I would like to thank the planning board members for their time this evening. You all have the application in front of you, so I don't want to go through it word for word, but I would like to touch on some key highlight points. Tonight, I am seeking a private road approval for a 14-foot-wide gravel driveway over a street shown on an approved subdivision plan. The site is located at the corner of Valley and Daw Road. The farmland that the site is located on is part of the Maxwell Land, which is located behind the farm market between Spurwink, Eastman, and Sawyer Road. This driveway and associated turnaround will serve a single-family home on a two-and-a-half-acre site that I am purchasing from Nate and Kathy Maxwell. We are seeking private road approval instead of private accessway because we are preserving Nate and Kathy's options for the future. Nate and Kathy own 78 acres with very little public road frontage, so it's very important for Nate and Kathy to keep their right to access their land off Daw Road Extension. I am asking for a waiver on a private road construction standards because we have no future plans for further development, and I would like this driveway to fit in with the rest of the neighborhoods and the landscape. There'll be very little traffic associated with the lot because it is only servicing a single-family home. I have worked with Bob Malley, our Public Works Director, to address drainage and existing site conditions, so that after the driveway improvements are completed, the water situation will be improved for the neighbors in the site as it is now. I have done all of this at my expense so that I don't create any new water issues. I hope with the complete application presented to you tonight that there are no major questions or concerns, that we might be able to get immediate approval. If not, would be more than willing to answer those questions tonight, and if I can't answer them to the board's satisfaction, then I would be willing to return for the March meeting. I would like to thank the planning board members and their time and consideration tonight. I would also like to thank Maureen O'Meara, Bruce Smith, Bob Malley, for their time and assistance in helping me prepare my application. Thank you.
Thank you. What we have on tonight is completeness.
Yep.
Maureen, do we have any issues?
I think the main concern here is that the applicant has prepared what we call a homegrown plan, and the town attorney has reviewed it and requested significant additional detailed information, and...
Attorney or engineer?
The engineer, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
And the board is going to need to make a decision about how much, if any additional information is likely to be provided.
In principle, I don't have any problem with what it's clear that you're trying to do, and I can understand why, when you're creating just a single residence here, you want this kind of an accessway. I think, however, and I don't know if it's a matter of completeness or our next step, that we do need to go through the process point by point and do waivers for the various elements of the subdivision road requirements that you're seeking a waiver for. I don't know that we can sort of generically waive them, and so I think that's, and I think that's, in general, what the town engineer is looking for, to take a look at each requirement, for us to consider that specific requirement and find that it's acceptable to waive it. I sort of went through that myself at home and concluded that, yes, it is, but I think we need to do that on a formal basis. So I don't know if that's a completeness question or a question for after...
Go ahead, Maureen.
Okay. Heard that.
What?
I kind of heard that question. I think what the board has done in the past is, you're presented with a list of information that needs to be provided, and if you make a finding that the application is complete, the implication is that anything that hasn't been provided is waived. Now, you want to, waiving a standard is different from waiving an item for completeness. And you can also waive standards under the subdivision ordinance, not under the site plan ordinance, but if you wanted to make an individual finding on each waiver of item for completeness, you certainly can do that.
No, I was actually referring not to the specific standards that become applicable through the subdivision ordinance, which I think are also being requested to be waived, but that may be another step of the process. For, just, the road width, the road construction, all of those kinds of specific things, which I think sidewalks, which were being asked waived, I think we need to identify specifically and conclude that we can do that. And I don't see a specific request to do that on an item-by-item basis.
Do we need specific requests in order to make a decision of completeness?
Either we're going to deem it complete and follow the road Maureen just outlined, then we either have to go through the waivers one at a time, or we're going to require some information now.
I have another question. Has the attorney looked at the purchase and sale agreement and the service maintenance agreement? I thought the service maintenance agreement was particularly complex, since it allows for future use of the private roadway and some sharing and expenses, but it was written fairly simply.
The attorney has reviewed the road ordinance agreement, and I don't, either he has it, and I'm waiting for comments, or he's already provided me with comments, but we typically don't worry about who pays. We usually don't care, as long as somebody's paying, and if they don't do what they've promised to do, that the town can go in and maintain the road, and we can bill whomever. So as for the purchase and sale agreement, that's typically not something we send to the town engineer, purchase and, excuse me, the town attorney.
Excuse me, was that?
I am tonight. Typically, we use the purchase and sale agreement in order to meet the requirement to show right title and interest. So the town's records show that this property is owned by Nate Maxwell, and this applicant has to show that he has the legal right to bring this property before the board, and one of the ways to do that is if you own it and you can provide a deed, but she does not, if you are pursuing this application as a co-applicant with the owner, and while Mr. Maxwell is here, he isn't on the application form. And then the third way that we usually see is when there's a purchase and sale agreement that has both the owner's name on it and the applicant's name on it. So that's usually the only thing we use that purchase and sale agreement for.
Barbara?
I actually think that it might be prudent to go through the points and grant waivers if we're going to grant the waivers, simply because the applicant can then go back, if we decide not to grant a waiver, and rework things according to what our wishes might be. In other words, go through it, go through each thing that Osteen Associates has stipulated and say, you know, "We agree, we can, or we'll grant a waiver. We won't grant a waiver for this reason." And then it's clean. I mean, we can deem it complete by the waivers that we've granted.
The only thing I would caution you is, if you're going to want to not grant a standard waiver on, say, the width of the road, don't grant a waiver on providing information on that now. Is that clear?
In other words, just say, "We won't grant you a waiver on the road."
Don't waive, ask for information that you'll need later on.
Oh, "We won't grant a waiver" that.
Well, to that point, then, and maybe I'm having a hard time with where completeness, the conversation about completeness ends and the conversation about waivers and the substantive content begins, but in reviewing the checklist, there seems to be nothing missing here. Am I correct?
The only thing that is missing is, I pulled it out on iMamo, it's item 12 on the completeness checklist.
Right, the drainage, yeah.
And it's, well, it's more than drainage. It's basically the umbrella item that is all the design details, and which is, you know, kind of the meat and potatoes for an engineer and the high-cost item for now.
But also the road width. I think we have to decide whether we grant a waiver.
The applicant has provided you information on the width of the road, have given you a cross-section that shows you how they're going to construct the road. So for the purposes of completeness, it provided you information on road width.
Okay.
With regard to number 12, though, Barbara just helped me. P means pending. I was a little stymied by the P.
Partial, I'm sorry.
Partial, oh, okay.
Not pending.
She's led me down the wrong path, apparently. For P. Have there been further conversations between Mr. Tamero and you or your office about what else is needed, or do we have a glaring hole there?
What you have is, Mr. Tamero has gone over the application checklist with me prior to submitting an application.
Right.
He has made a decision about the amount of information he wants to provide, and he's asking you for a waiver of anything that he hasn't provided, and then what you have...
A waiver of submission requirement.
Submission requirement.
Talking about three different waivers, and I want to...
We are, and that's...
We are not waiving...
That's the difficulty I'm having, is the submission requirement waivers have to do with me.
Just think about, do you have a threshold amount of information that you need to consider the request? And that's what your first item of business is for tonight. And what you have from the town engineer is, starting at the bottom on paragraph four, he's talking about a list of things that he would normally ask be provided for a subdivision road. And I think what Mrs. Schenkel has suggested is that you could actually start with item four and go down through this list and decide whether there are any things here that you actually would like to have submitted. And if you do want to have them submitted, your choice this evening is to look at the applicant and say, "You didn't provide it. Your application is incomplete tonight," or the applicant promises that he will provide that information next month, and you decide whether or not there's a good faith effort on his part to come through.
And the risk of being always on the applicant, and if he doesn't, runs the risk of denial.
I think that's a great idea.
That's fine with me.
Can you put it in historical context for me? Previously, have we waived that submission requirement?
Have you waived submission requirements? Yes.
But the big one, the big, the plan, it appears to me there's really just one big item that's missing. It's number 12, the Surface Drainage Stormwater Management Plan, the overall plan.
Right. I think what the applicant has provided is, he's shown you a culvert. He's shown you, I think, a size of a culvert and a location of the culvert.
And the construction detail.
So he has provided some information, hence the P, but if you're an engineer, there's not enough information available right now for the engineer to be able to say to you, "This culvert is sized larger."
Right. And so historically, what has this board done? Do we know?
You've gone both ways.
Yeah. I mean, if it's a critical piece in a critical spot, we need the detail. If it's generally enough information, given the scale of the project, and, you know, balancing, you know, the applicant's desire to move a one-lot project forward, and this is where, historically, quite candidly, we've leaned on the engineers on the board to help us out, and one engineer unfortunately is not here tonight.
Right.
So that's, it's hard for me to make that decision right now.
For example, this one, do we have any information on site distances? That's a kind of information I would think we would need and is not, needs an engineer to determine, I would think. And there are other things, such as, "Do you or do you not propose to have curbing?" That you can just answer for us tonight, and that's kind of a much easier...
No curbing.
Which is what the engineer assumed, right.
Maybe Barbara's approach is the best one. Start going through them one at a time, and if we really hit a one that we've all got some big concerns on, we talk to the applicant, because these may go quickly.
Yeah. I can do my best to answer...
I understand. We're not trying to unreasonably drive a price. We're trying to...
No, and that's the reason...
Should we need to make an informed decision for the town. So the first one is number four.
May I ask a question first? Would you please go over the turnaround, because you've got a spot marked here that looks like it's a turnaround, and there's some verbiage that says that it's not the turnaround. Is the turnaround just at the end of the little short part of Daw Road?
If you come down Daw Road, and once you cross onto the access, the turnaround is actually on what is going to be Nate Maxwell's property, and then the actual, where the truck would back in...
Is that the turnaround? Well, it is. It's marked as a turnaround, but then it isn't clear that that's what that is.
That is the turnaround, and this is the...
Because you have some verbiage in here that sort of indicated the end of Daw Road was the turnaround.
Right.
And you need to change that. I mean, that's very unclear, and that's an important point.
What does it say, that, Barbara?
Where is that? Could you explain to me where?
It was someplace in the letter that you wrote that really confused me.
Perhaps you didn't mean the exact end, but near the end.
Exact, yes. That's exactly...
Well, you have to describe it as you're going to have an actual turnaround.
I guess we should have described that at the end of the, near the end of the Daw Road Extension, that's where the turnaround would start and be completed.
Well, see, oh, I guess it's on the plans. You have emergency vehicle turnaround.
Correct.
It's down at the bottom of the detail.
But it's actually, it's actually, but it's off the road. You actually have sort of a half a T shape here.
It is a half, a T shape.
It's a hammer.
It's a...
Yeah, it's a hammer, but if we, the plan doesn't sound like that's the turnaround.
Because of where the line, the arrows...
Because where the arrow is. It's very confusing.
Yeah, that should be easy to fix on the...
Oh, no, I know, but I'm just saying, that's, that needs to be very clear on the plan. I'm not trying to nip it on...
No, no, it's fine. That turnaround is the turnaround that the chief gave us, Peter Gleason.
Well, yeah, and that's fine. That's exactly what we want to see, but just make it clearer on the plan.
Okay. All set?
Go through these.
Sure. You want, Maureen, if I'm starting at four would be?
Starting, are you four on the...
On the Osteen letter, correct.
What about three?
I had the same question.
Yes, three, too.
Do you have this letter, Nick?
Yes, I do. The Osteen letter? Yeah, I'll follow with you.
I didn't think we needed to discuss three, because there are some existing 40-foot-wide road rights-of-way in town that you have approved in the past, such as Grover Road Extension.
Forty foot is what we're...
Forty foot wide.
I have no trouble with that. It said that the cross-section shows 30. It's a minor inconsistency, apparently.
Yeah, he's using the, he's using the construction detail for the private accessway, which has a 30-foot-wide red light.
I see.
We'll be needing to amend that.
Yes.
Show a 40-foot-wide red light.
But also, don't we need a waiver?
Actually, the subdivision ordinance does allow short extensions of 40-foot-wide...
So we don't need a waiver for that? I mean, I'm happy with 40-foot, it's fine.
In this case.
Just want to be sure we have it right.
So Elaine and I are all set on three. Four. Okay, that seemed to be of some concern.
Well, I think, Nick, you need to work with the town engineer in detail. What needs to be detailed there?
My concern about four, not looking at the detail, or not fully appreciating the detail, is that the town engineer couldn't give us an opinion about whether the plan that was submitted met the ordinance because of information that was lacking. So I think we need to work with the town engineer. Well, that's why I had a question, of whether we should simply be saying it's not complete, rather than going through all of these, because this seems to me to be a glaring problem, particularly given the development within that small neighborhood. I mean, four and 11, it's a combination of those two.
Maureen, do you have insight as to what the engineer might be looking for to help us with three without requiring a full-blown drainage?
I'm guessing, I'm guessing one of us can, and I'm guessing here, but when you have a 40-foot width, and within that 40-foot area, you have to create a fairly level 14-foot-wide surface road, and then you need drainage on either side of it, and that involves changing grades, and my guess is what he wants is a plan that shows that you are reaching original, that you're getting back to original grade before you... you're getting back to original grade before you slip outside the 40-foot wide right of way. My best guess of what he's concerned-
In the detail that you've provided, the applicant's provided of this construction plan doesn't show.
The engineer, he's not getting sufficient information.
And I think number 11 kind of attaches to some of the, or extends the conversation in number four. When it talks about sizing of proposed culverts, elevations. I don't have full appreciation of that detail, but I do have an appreciation of the fact the engineer doesn't seem to have the information that he needs in order to provide us with an analysis and an-
When I was going through the process, I asked Bob to come out and meet with me. Obviously-
Mally.
Bob Mally, I'm sorry, Public Works Director. Obviously, I'm trying to avoid some costs. We're trying to do this on a very low budget, and that's why. So I asked Bob to come out and meet with me, because I'm very concerned about the neighbors and the water situation. And he walked me through a few things. He's the one who sent me, you know, gave me a couple ideas to go see an engineer and get some cross-sections. I do agree that, you know, we don't have the culvert sizes because we didn't do a study. I don't know what the feeling is, but at the same time, I can just put forth my best effort to work with Bob to make sure that this is correct. I talked about installing two catch basins, tying in the Valley Road catch basin that the town already has in, running it out behind, away from all the houses on Valley Road, so that we wouldn't cause any basement floodings and that sort of thing. And he agreed with all of it, thought it was great. He would maintain the system, that sort of thing. But we, obviously, we didn't spend the money to pay somebody to do a storm, you know, a drainage plan.
And to show that on this plan.
Where we're at right now is, we're pretty much maxed out, and then the next step is to spend the $10,000 or something, which is going to nix the whole project for us. And that would be the end of what we're trying to do, if we go with the private road. And again, a reason for the private road is to preserve Nate's availability to his land and not cut it off, which is what is a huge concern of the towns, is not creating landlocked parcels. And that's what we're trying to do, trying not to do, is create landlocked parcels.
That's really at the heart of my concerns about this project, and it's not an issue of completeness. But I want to better understand why it is that a private access way would, in perpetuity, lock up the access, or secondary access, to this land. Why is that a permanently limiting solution?
Permanently limiting solution?
The private access way versus the private road. And that is a substantive issue. I know it's not an issue of completeness, but it's really, I think, at the core of what we're ultimately going to decide.
I think the issue there is that if there is a private road, the statute allows a private road to serve one or more lots, as opposed to the statutory provision for, it's not called a private access way.
The private access way is more-
Private access way specifically by the code can only serve one lot.
And it cannot be changed in the future?
Well, they'd have to come back again and start all over again. What you're trying to do, I think, is right. I think that we should start with a private road, and we should make it work as a private road, so that in the future, if you notice there's a large parcel on this side, that if the Maxwells decided they wanted to do something with this parcel, then they would have the capability already with what's there.
Isn't that backwards?
But what's going to be built is identical.
From, for Eliza's concern is that that's something you would spend on engineering if you were putting in more than one house.
More than one house, right.
So I mean, in a way, we're trying to give that enhanced level of approval without the benefit of spreading it out over 10 houses. And I'm not encouraging 10 houses, I'm just saying. What I'm saying is, the applicant is trying to go to that standard on a one-house budget, which doesn't make any financial sense.
Now, and Maureen, correct me if I'm wrong, but by asking a waiver for another house to go up or anything to be done on that property other than just accessing it, they or we would have to return to the planning board to, one, upgrade the road from what we've built it as to a private road, and, two, as the engineer puts in one of his comments, is that we need to consider, like, the size of the water line. We're only bringing a water line in big enough for one house.
And then when, if you put more in, that you're going to have to rip it up?
You have to rip it up and come back to you guys and get approval all over again before anything else can happen. And I think, she can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I'm on the right track.
No, that's fine. I'm just trying to confirm that that's true.
Yeah, no, yeah.
The other advantage of coming in for a private road is it very, very clearly establishes that the private road is owned by the body that owns the bulk of the land, which is the Maxwell family. And you come in for a private access way, typically, the access way to the lot is owned by the lot owner. And even accidentally, it would be very unfortunate for you to lose one of the few access points to 78 acres that you have right now. So the private road is a much better way to preserve the Maxwell's right to have access through here. And, you know, we do have places in town where people have created one lot and inadvertently and quite catastrophically eliminated their access when they created that lot. So we do try to think into the future about this, even though there's no proposal by anyone to do anything else with that land.
So the question is, how deep do we dig into the submission waivers and substantive waivers to get over that threshold with some comfort level that we're presenting the town's interest well enough with this one lot?
It just should be noted, too, that the comments from the town engineer about surface drainage, and those could easily be the same comments you would get for a private access way permit.
Sure.
Yep.
I was answering my next questions. And typically, we wouldn't require that level of detail.
Well, you do require that they have to show that they're not creating sheet flow across the intersection, and they're also not supposed to be creating a drainage problem to a buddy properties, even if it's just a private access way.
Is there any way to tie this into some level of working with the town EPW to basically make sure it works?
Absolutely, yeah.
And by our regs, I'm not so sure.
Well, it's really, you know, I have to put on my municipal burden hat at this point, and it's not the responsibility of the Department of Public Works-
I understand.
...to design development plans for individual property owners.
Well, it sounds like, and I'm just, it sounds like the applicant has fairly said does what he's proposing works, and he's gotten positive feedback from Bob, that it does, rather than, no, this isn't going to work. You've got to come in with a heightened level of plans to show the town engineer that it's going to work as well as me. Have you heard anything to the closing, Maureen? I mean, if you have. I'm trying to work with the applicant.
I understand. I understand.
I appreciate it.
Can I ask a question that may influence or direct Maureen's answer? Is there precedent, or is it reasonable to have notes on the plan to the effect that Bob and Nick have had conversations and what they've agreed upon, instead of showing the detail on the plan that the town engineer is asking for?
The town engineer and the public works together, the public works director, work very closely together. And if you wanted to go a little bit out on the limb, I guess one of your options would be to go with this tonight, be instructed, instruct the applicant to acquire a memo from the public works director that says he's okay with this.
Okay, that's kind of the road I was going down.
And if he's unable to acquire that memo, then you're looking at trying to satisfy the town engineer's concerns.
That's the direction I was wondering about. Trying to achieve satisfaction from our response, standpoint of our responsibilities, while at the same time not costing the applicant more money-
Disproportionately.
Disproportionately to the development.
In my application, I don't, you know, I know it's a lot of stuff, but on page 11, we included an instructional detail, which is just basically describing, I think, what you guys are looking for, and it's a lot of the information that I took from Bob and the engineer that helped me with my cross-sections and that sort of thing, about where the water's running from, where it's crossing currently, where it's going to go. I just thought I'd mention it to see if that would help answer some of the questions that you guys-
Could you put that on the plan, short of spending the $10,000 for a-
Absolutely, I mean, yeah, it's just a-
Drainage?
Just a page.
Yeah.
Which one is?
It's part of the record, though. I guess, is there a benefit to putting it on the plan? No.
Oh, it's that one. Okay, no, I was just trying to figure out. It says construction details.
Construction detail at the top. It was the second to last page.
This is all part of the submission, so I'm not sure adding a lot of verbiage on a plan. It doesn't necessarily get us to where we want to be.
Do we have a concern here with precedent, though, in terms of distinguishing why we're making this exception to providing us this information just for this project? And another project comes, and the applicant similarly tells us that it's the town requirements that are going to either make or break their project, and it's just one lot, or maybe in that case, it's two lots, and they just can't afford to do it. And so we waive our town ordinances. And as sympathetic as I am to that-
But you wouldn't see that unless it's got the same unique characteristics that this one has, which is the access.
Then I think we need to be very, very careful to identify what are the unique characteristics here so that we don't get stuck. I can just anticipate that we will hear not less of these kinds of concerns, but more of them in the months immediately ahead.
I think some, I mean, I mean-
And we would need to do that outlining.
We can describe some of the unique characteristics. I think one of them is that there's 78 acres involved that don't have much public road frontage right now, except for Daw Road Extension. Another unique, and told Maureen I was going to get into it, but is that we're trying to start a small farm and preserve the actual Maxwell farm, which doesn't have anything to do with what we're talking about. But that's another item to this, is that I'm a very young Cape graduate trying to do this, and I'm working with a farmer that's no longer farming as much as he used to. I mean, that's a unique characteristic, in my opinion. I don't know if those are the types of things, I can give you a lot of those. That's what you're looking for.
Candidly to the board, I mean, my, the hook for me is the access to that extra acreage. I think that alone is enough to work in the direction that we're going in, in this particular case, which is one of the, you know, complies with the goals of comprehensive plan. I mean, there's lots of other particular items we can pull out here. I mean, right now, at the stage we're at, we're talking about completeness. So, and it's fair that if we're not interested in waiving the substantive issues here, that why make you submit the information? So it's kind of a, we're hashing out both issues at the same time, but given those unique characteristics that we've identified so far, that's enough for me, candidly. And other folks on the board might not feel that way, but, and I'm anxious to hear more. But, you know, at this point, given what the applicant's told me as part of the record, given the construction details, I'm not interested in asking the applicant to come up with more information than he's already submitted in these two construction detail drawings, the letter under item number four. I don't know whether anyone else feels the same way.
I think the unique circumstance is that, for practical purposes, in the immediate and perhaps medium term, is that this will be a private access way. And so perhaps what we should look at is, what would we need for a private access way permit to be complete? And maybe that's the standard that we should use, or a private access way, excuse me, application to be complete.
But it isn't. It's a private road, which you have wrong on here, too, on the plan.
I don't know that we would require much more if it were what Eliza was talking about. I mean-
require more or require less?
Or as much.
As much, I guess, as much as the-
When we started this, we started with private access way. That's where we were headed, that was the easiest. And then we realized what we were doing, and obviously Nate and I are working together, and once we realized what could happen, that's when we moved to private road. And then we figured out that the private road cost would be too much. And that's when someone suggested that, why don't we ask for a waiver? And that would bring the cost back down. It'd be labeled as private road, but yet the waiver would protect the cost for me and also protect the town, that nothing else could be done down there as far as development, unless somebody came back and stood here and asked for approval again.
Right.
That was my, that's what I thought is behind this.
That's what I'm looking to solidify, is that last sentence you just said, that if this thing gets any bigger, we're going to need that detail of information.
Yeah, we have to come, we have to come back.
Well, I think start, this entire project should be worked through with the private road, not the access way, because I think it's the right thing to do for the town, and I think Nick realizes it's the right thing to do for the relationships that he's working with to make this successful with the Maxwells. I'd like to suggest that perhaps, I'd like to suggest that we consider deeming this complete with the requirement that Maureen has already mentioned. Let me just map this out for you. Deem it complete, table it for a public hearing, and perhaps a site walk, with the understanding that Nick will meet with the public works director and the town engineer and address all of the issues that are in the letter with either an agreement of those two parties or notes on the plans or somehow to address them. Because some of the items that are mentioned by the town engineer are quite significant and need to be identified or mentioned on the plan somehow, like the water utilities, for instance, are lacking. But it seems to me to make better sense to move ahead to that next step so that we can deal with the substantive waivers and have him be able to move ahead and address the town engineer issues, instead of us sitting here trying to find the answers from various paragraphs out of 25 pages of submission, which I don't feel I can do, because I don't understand the stuff enough. That's something the town engineer would need to do. How do others feel about that?
I guess I'm, if I'm understanding the town engineer's letter correctly, he's saying that, and I assume he's looked at everything we have in front of us, that based on all the information presently in front of him, he as an engineer cannot determine whether this project will have adequate drainage. If the engineer can't determine that, I clearly can't determine that. So if what completeness means is, we can't then come back to the applicant and ask for more detail that would allow an engineer to make that determination, then I don't see how we can say it's complete. That's my concern. I'd love to do what, I would love to move the process on and have some way that Nick can meet with the town engineer and the public works director and provide them information either with sketch drawings or with a discussion that's followed by a memo or on some informal way that doesn't require him to hire a professional engineer. But it may be that in order to make these determinations, more information's going to have to be produced. That seems to be what the town engineer is telling us.
What I'm trying to figure out, though, or what it sounds like, is that he's had conversations with the public works director that may not, and I don't know if they've been passed on to the town engineer. He's had, it sounds like from what he's telling us, that he's had some feedback from the public works director that has, the feedback has addressed some of these issues, but what I guess, what I don't know is, Maureen, do you know, has there been a connection between the-
I don't know if the town engineer and the public works director have been able to connect on this. The meeting we're supposed to have on that didn't happen this month.
And who's the authority on drainage issues? The engineer or the public works director?
The industry is this board. We rely on them.
The other thing I think that would only be fair is to say what we're willing to waiver to in here, what we're willing to give waivers for. I mean, there are a lot of things here that Nick has not asked for waivers, and yet we should say, this is, we're willing to give a waiver for this, we're willing to give a waiver for this. So he knows that those are things he doesn't have to deal with. And also, so it's clear-
And also, so it's clear to the town engineer and whomever else that we are willing to give waivers for those things.
Such as, like, an example of curbing?
A curbing and all of those.
Somewhat an easy one to identify.
Yes, I was.
Are those completeness issues, then?
Well, if he's not going to provide them, we don't need the detail in the plan.
Yeah, but we have to say that's fine with us, too. Because it's a private road, not a private accessway.
We need to move on to five, six, seven, just to see whether we've narrowed it down to just drainage.
I think so.
That's fair.
I think so. And then, Nick can concentrate. It's part of the record, and Nick can concentrate his efforts on those items that he actually has to work on and forget about the rest of it.
So, item five is the site distance measurements. And personally, I have no trouble with leaving that off of one lot.
Yep, agreed.
Anyone else feel different? Six is the sidewalks. Well, the engineer's saying he supports our waivers.
There aren't any there anyway, so.
Only in...
Oh, that's fine. Waiver for that.
Seven...
I'd like to go back to five, though.
Okay.
I think that, that, it's saying here, they have to provide site distances.
Right, but that's...
Maureen, has that ever been waived?
I would think if Nick was talking about coming out here with, you know, with trucks and things, I would think site distances would be pretty important. We do that for residential driveways. On these private access roads, the other ones we've been talking about, we have site distance information.
Well, and maybe that's easy to provide, but my understanding was, other than the residents of this home, it's very infrequent trips on this, on the driveway, essentially.
Yeah.
Private road.
The rest of the activities.
Not on coming...
Not on Daw Road.
Right.
Maureen, precedent on that?
I don't, I don't think you've ever waived it. I do think, I do know, however, that there are times when the Public Works Director has done that measurement for an applicant.
Well, there you go.
We can do that.
That works.
I would like to see a site distance.
I would, too.
So, any way that you can provide at least financial detriment to yourself. Excuse me, now you can go on to six.
So, you don't want to go back? I thought we moved on from six, or...
Oh, six, that's fine. Round seven.
This is the landscaping.
I think we can do that.
Yeah. All right. Eight is the curbing, which we've heard about.
Wave.
Yep.
Nine is...
Big one.
Do we have something from the fire chief?
Well, that's the hook. You know, my view is, on the turnaround, you got to make him happy.
You got, I'm sorry?
You have to make him happy. I mean, he has to be able to be comfortable that he can get his fire truck in and out of there to service.
He gave me this detail.
Okay.
Just get a letter from him.
I don't know if I've got a way to prove that. I went to him, and he gave me the print-off, and I took it to the guy who did the plan.
Okay.
We've had other applicants that have had notes from, had letters from the fire chief.
Just get a letter from the fire chief.
Just get a letter saying that everything's okay.
He's happy with the, after the turnaround.
But specifically with regard to the surface, right? One of the, because the comment here is...
Is the surface material proper?
The surface and the T shape. So, you want to look at number nine.
I don't think the T shape's going to be an issue, but I do, I do, he may have something.
The surface materials.
Yeah, but you just need a letter.
I had a quick question, and I think Maureen answered it, is that the, all of the heads of departments normally meet on this before, and that meeting didn't happen?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
We had numerous cancellations.
Okay.
I think after you call them, they'll be coming next month.
Well, I actually, I have asked for letters from both the fire chief and Bob Mallie. And they both told me that, once they have their department head meeting and go over this, that's when they express their comments. They were both hesitant to sign a letter so that I could bring it to you right off the bat.
It's always surprising not to have those ahead of time, but that makes, it's making more sense to me.
Making more sense now. Just trying to put it all together.
And that's fine. I could have saved us a lot of time on this, though.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Monuments, right? Is that where we're at, number 10?
Yeah.
Monuments.
Right, 10.
It's a single lot.
I have no problem waving monuments.
I have no trouble with that.
Number 10.
11 is drainage, and we've gone over that.
Are we waiving monuments?
Well, yes.
Yes.
We have a, sorry, our position. 11, we're going to skip over drainage for the moment, so let's move on to 12 is the...
Well, that would be part of 11, too, that all has to do with, oh, that's...
I don't know.
Mr. Tamero, are you willing to change your detail to meet the requirements under item 12 of the town engineer's letter?
Yes.
Thank you.
That was easy.
There we go.
Okay. Well, 13 we've gone through, I mean, in terms of the width, right?
Yeah, we're waiving it.
I understand. Okay, that's going to happen as part of the, your 14.
14, you did it, that's okay.
Oh, okay, we just don't have anything.
And just to be clear, though, that to the extent that this roadway were ever to be utilized for any other purpose, that it would be a requirement, it would have to come in and get reviewed.
I'm not going to promise that. If you want to create a separate lot, you need 125 feet in this district, 100 feet in this district. So, unless he can find a way to create, I don't know if you even have 100 feet here. But, I mean, you know, one lot every five, two lots every five years, one lot every five years. So, yeah, there's, I'm not going to promise till they can't do something else with this road, with this road. But if they want to do a subdivision, definitely they can.
Okay. That answered my question, thank you.
But you're, are you saying there isn't enough frontage for one?
I'm saying I can't tell. It looks like there might be.
Enough for one more.
For one more.
But if you did one more in the five-year period, that's three lots, and it triggers subdivision review. So, you'd have to be at least five years, or you'd have to convey it to in a butter. I mean, there's so many exemptions.
Okay, but we're waiving the width of the road. So, that's clear, right?
Yes.
And that's not something you have to waive tonight. It's a substantive issue.
Right, and we're...
Well, I know, but I think that Nick ought to know what we're willing to waive. I think that's important.
Well, this is good. This will help me focus.
15.
Okay, that should be shown.
Yeah. Nick, do you have any, you have no trouble with that, right?
Nope.
You got to tell us where you're putting utilities.
Nope, that's fine.
Okay, that's a plan note. 16?
Sixteen.
It just says, tell, have your engineer put on the plan that it's got to be reviewed by the CEO after.
Yep.
That shouldn't be a big issue. That's a paperwork issue.
Yep, that's just, yep, it's fine.
Okay.
17 is also a...
Same note, another note.
Needs to be noted on the plan that we're not taking the road.
Right.
Under these terms, under these terms.
Yep.
Okay. Is that helpful?
Yes, so to go back down through...
You still haven't talked about drainage, though, huh?
Yeah, that's about what it was down to.
That's the elephant in the room.
And adding the utilities and stuff like that.
Well, he's, he's agreed to all that.
Yep.
The issue for us is, what are we going to do with the drainage issue? And that's...
Well, I think some detail should be added. And if you hadn't worked with the town engineer to get some of that detail, like he might say, a 15-inch pipe or a 12-inch pipe, and you could put that on the plans.
Is that, is that possible? I've never worked with OST.
Oh, yes.
It's something where I can talk, we can, or are they just going to look at me and say, you need a study?
No, you can call them directly, and you, you'll be paying for the time you spend with them.
Of course.
So, yes, you can call them.
But you can, okay.
You know, maybe in an hour or two of his time, you can sit down and get some of these things on the plans. And he'll be happy, and we'll be happy.
Okay.
Try to make it as painless as we can.
No, that's perfect. Thank you.
Okay. The question we have is, do we deem it complete, given that what he's going to do, again, his risk coming back to us with that information on the plan, or do we continue it for completeness? I mean, my inclination is to deem it complete to move the process forward. I mean, he's shown a lot of good faith in working with the town, a lot of these issues. And if it really is, if he basically can't come to terms with OST between now and the next meeting, and that, and we don't have that information, we may have no choice.
That you just...
Yeah.
What's the real impact of the project, though, if we don't deem it complete tonight? And it's, it extends your time out 30 days, but it's only February.
I have a goal in mind that I'm trying to get underway. I'd like to catch the building season. I personally have some goals that are in my business of very busy times of the year, so my goal was to be able to start in April or May and be completed by September. The other whole half of this is that there's a barn to be built and fencing to be put up, which is my goal, to get done before the ground freezes. But I'm...
Next year.
This, this fall is my goal, and it's a very ambitious goal, and that's what I'm going for. So, that's why it is, it is, to not deem complete pushes me back another 30 days, like you said, makes it tighter in the end. You know, for me, I'd love to see it deemed complete, let me work on these issues and get them for you by next meeting. And like you said, if I don't have them by next meeting, then you have no choice but nix it and we start over again. I think that's a risk I'm willing to take, but it's up to you.
I don't have, I mean...
As long as I comply with these things, we don't, nothing can happen until these are answered, correct?
Right.
I'd like to make a motion.
Thanks, Tom.
Be it ordered that, based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Nick Tamero for a private road review under the subdivision ordinance to extend Daw Road be deemed complete. Be it further ordered that the app...
Well, one at a time.
One at a time.
Motion having been made, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I would request that deemed complete, including all the comments that we've made this evening. Is that, just so the applicant's clear and the record's clear of that, is that okay to amend it?
That's fine.
And Beth, motion having been made by Tom Dolan and seconded by Beth. Oh, well, I would just add to the complete.
The amendment is that, that it incorporates all of the terms and conditions as discussed at this meeting.
Thank you.
So, Tom made the motion, Beth seconded it. Debate on the motion. Any questions, comments?
My only comment is, then, that really the risk of any delay is with the applicant.
Fair enough.
On my shoulders.
Yeah, so...
That's fine, thank you.
All in favor of the motion? All opposed to the motion? Motion is 5-1. Motion carries. Thank you very much for your...
No way. We have to discuss a sidewalk and a public hearing.
We just...
Like to make another motion?
Sidewalk.
Oh, sidewalk.
We want a sidewalk.
I think, yeah, I think we should.
I think we should.
I think this is, this is a situation where you can show us the neighbors and where you put all any of the drainage.
And quite candidly, on one of the issues, just as an example, sight lines, I don't care what the paper says, I like to go out there and stand there, take a look.
I'm a visual person as well.
Yeah, so I think the sidewalk is necessary.
The question is, what am I going to do?
Well, let's hope it's not on a day it snows a foot and a half.
It is a wooded lot, so the snowpack is very minimal most of the time.
Well, I think the lot itself, I don't think we even need to look at.
Where you're going to be looking at will be the minimal.
We just need to look at the private road.
It's very minimal snowpack where you'll be looking.
I have snowshoes.
I do, too, so we're ready to go.
Several pairs, so.
Well, given two, we may have two sidewalks. It's essential for that.
It's just the challenge is, because the planning board meeting was moved back from last week.
Right.
The next meeting of the board is March 17th. The submission deadline for that is February 27th. Because you've moved the meeting, you probably will, you know, move our submission deadline to next Monday, March 2nd. And typically, you try to hold a sidewalk before an applicant asks to resubmit their information. So, you just, it's just a very tight time.
It's going to be on Saturday.
Do you do a sidewalk as a whole or divided?
And it's open to the public. It's advertised, I mean, people have every right to be there.
How many days do you need to advertise it?
You can schedule it for the Saturday night.
How many of us can come on Saturday? I can come on Saturday.
You can come on Saturday.
Yep, I'll be there.
Okay.
Six, 5:30.
No!
Stop it.
Get it out of the way?
Absolutely not.
What, what time did we agree?
We haven't.
I'll let people who have children decide what time.
Eight?
8:00 AM.
That's good.
Sounds delightful.
It's Saturday. I'm going to have jammies.
Come on, you know Jim's coming in a fight.
Eight o'clock? Eight o'clock?
I'll bring coffee, Barbara.
It's the donuts that I want to have.
Sounds lovely.
So, it's 8:00 AM, right?
Eight. Are we seriously, it's, is it 8:00 AM?
Not at 9:00.
Can I hear 8:30? 9:00? 9:00?
I'm open anytime.
Well, that's the question.
How many people want 9:00?
Well, we may have another one. That's the other reason to start.
Yeah, 9:00 and 10:00.
We can almost schedule the other one at 8:00.
How many people vote for 9:00?
I think 9:00. How about 9:00? I think 9:00 is good.
9:00 is fine. It doesn't matter.
And you don't have to bring coffee, Peter. We'll make it at 08:00.
Meeting at Daw Road.
Yes.
Yes.
Alley and Daw, right?
All right. And that way, if there's anything else we suggest, we can suggest it then.
Yes, absolutely.
That being resolved, can I make another motion? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Be it ordered that the above application be tabled to the March 17, 2009, meeting and nine meeting of the planning board, at which time a public hearing will be held.
Second.
Motion having been made by Tom Dolan, seconded by Barbara Schenkel. Discussion on the motion, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
We hope we've been somewhat helpful.
No, thank you. Go work with us.
Mr. Chair, be it duly noted that I am recusing myself from any form of conversation on the next matter.
Did you know that Tom Dolan stepped him down?
I'm sorry, you're a horrible hole.
Can I? I'm doing that, so.
No, I'm, I'm disappointed.
That's fine. I have one.
All right, this is what I know, yeah. And you probably took it out of the workshop, so let's, let's talk quickly.
Okay, we do have one more item. Uh, the next item I'd like to call is Crato, is it pronouncing it correctly? Credo?
Credo.
Credo, private accessway permit. Jeanette Credo is requesting a private accessway permit for a vacant lot located at one-twelve Delano Park. Excuse me, we do have another item, if you could step out, if you're going to talk. Section nineteen-seven-nine, private accessway permit. The matter is on for completeness. If the applicant could step up to the podium, introduce himself, and make his presentation, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, my name is John Mitchell, Mitchell and Associates, and I represent Jeanette Credo. Bob Danielson is with me this evening.
Hold on, John.
Sorry.
It was, uh, for microphone.
I had no idea what that was going to be. Go ahead, John.
Okay. Um, this application is for a private accessway permit to make Lot Four-
Sorry.
Uh, Lot Four, which is located right here, to make it a buildable lot. Uh, this is Lot Four, and this is Lot Five. Uh, Lot Four is owned by Ms. Credo, who resides in the single-family home located on Lot Five. Uh, this is, this lot is located, um, at the end of Delano Park, entrance number one. Um, this is the extension of the road here, and, uh, the area in green represents the existing vegetation, uh, the area in sepia brown represents the driveway that serves Ms. Credo's residence. And as you can see, it goes across Lot Four. This is, uh, Lot Four is a non-conforming lot consisting of twenty-nine thousand thirteen square feet. Um, it is located in the residential A zoning district, as well as the shoreline zone. Uh, this line represents spring high tide line, which was surveyed. Um, in this small dash line here represents the debris line, of which the seventy-five foot and the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot setbacks are measured from. Uh, there is a twenty-foot wide unimproved roadway located along the northerly line of Lot Four and Lot Five. Um, it is also located along the westerly side of Lot Four. Uh, this is Fort Williams, located here. Uh, this is the Atlantic Ocean. Uh, there's a residence located on this lot, Dan Cassetta's, uh, residence, and this is the residence of Mrs. Harris. Uh, there's some, we took a series of photographs, uh, showing the existing conditions. Uh, this is looking down the twenty-foot, uh, unimproved roadway. This is looking, uh, down the existing driveway that serves Ms. Credo's, uh, residence. Uh, this is another shot looking down the twenty-foot, uh, unimproved roadway. And as you can see, there are, uh, some existing, uh, fir trees that border the, the northerly, uh, property line along Fort Williams. This is Ms. Credo's residence. Um, again, looking down, uh, the twenty-foot unimproved roadway. Uh, this is looking in the opposite direction, looking west. And there, these are the existing fir trees, and there, uh, there's a series of stone walls throughout this property here. This is the low stone wall that borders the existing vegetation. And then, there's a series of slides that just show the character of Delano Park. Uh, the roadways within Delano Park, um, vary from nine to twelve feet wide. Uh, this is Sheet Two, which is a, the plan of the private accessway. Uh, because Lot Four, uh, does not have the required minimum road frontage of a hundred-and-twenty-five feet, uh, the applicant is requesting a private accessway that would provide the minimum road frontage. The private accessway, um, as you can see, is located, uh, within the twenty-foot wide, uh, unimproved roadway. Uh, the required hammerhead turnaround, a portion of that is located on Lot Five. And, uh, in addition to this, because the, uh, the private accessway standards require a thirty-foot wide right-of-way, we have, and this is only twenty feet, we've provided a ten-foot wide access easement parallel to the, uh, unimproved roadway to, to, uh, give the thirty-foot overall right-of-way width. Um, if the board remembers during the workshop meeting, we presented, um, initially, we presented a nine-foot wide paved private accessway that was done, um, to, uh, maintain the character of Delano Park, to be consistent with the other roads in Delano Park, as well as to preserve the existing, uh, vegetation that is along the property line and the stone walls. Um, the fire chief wasn't comfortable with the nine feet, nine-foot width. Uh, however, he did agree to a twelve-foot wide paved width, um, with a two-foot wide, uh, grass gravel shoulder, which runs along the, uh, the northerly side of the private accessway. And he did approve that, uh, to give the overall fourteen-foot width. Uh, the turnaround, the hammerhead turnaround, um, is, has been designed in accordance with the town's standards. However, what we're proposing here is, is a little unique, where instead of a, the typical petunias concrete pave, pavement, we're proposing a permeable paver, and that's a concrete paver, which is, allows, uh, stormwater to infiltrate down through the paver. Uh, it's a DEP-approved project, uh, product, um, and Bruce Smith has approved it also. Uh, the permeable pavers, uh, will be edged with a stabilized paver, um, along the, along either side. And this was done to minimize the, uh, minimize the impervious surface that would be located on, on Lot Five, and to maintain the lot coverage. Um, and then the relocated driveway to service Ms. Credo's residence will be, will extend off the end of the hammerhead, uh, and then connect to the existing turnaround. Um, we have met with both fire chief and, um, Bruce Smith to review this plan, um, and they have both approved, um, the design of it. Uh, this is Sheet Three, which is the grading drainage and utilities plan. Um, the water will, uh, will be, the water to service Lot Four will extend up this, uh, utility easement and enter Lot Four at this point here. And it has been, um, it doesn't show on this sheet, it shows on Sheet Five, the extension of this water service goes along, uh, and out to the, the existing roadway of Delano Park, where we have connected to the main. Uh, the relocated water main, uh, to service Ms. Credo's residence will extend down the right-of-way, uh, the new private accessway and into her house. Uh, there is an approved onsite disposal, septic disposal system, which has been located here for Lot Four, and the application, um, the HHE-two-hundred forms are in your booklet. Um, and then the electric telephone and cable will, uh, come off of this utility pole here to service Lot Four, and then to service Lot Five, again, in underground service, will be relocated along the private accessway into, um, the existing residence. Stormwater management, uh, the access drive and the turnaround, um, the grading and drainage of, of, of those two elements, uh, have been designed, um, to slope with the natural terrain. Les Berry of HTM has done a detailed analysis, stormwater analysis, uh, of this design in a letter from him, is in your packet, and Steve Harding has concurred with his comments. Uh, and then finally, um, staff comments, we have, uh, we've addressed all of the staff permits, which includes Maureen's memo dated December tenth, two thousand and eight, Steve Harding's letter dated December ninth, two thousand and eight. Um, and those, our response to their comments are in our December, uh, I'm sorry, January thirtieth letter. And additionally, we've addressed comments, uh, Steve Harding's latest comments, um, which were dated February ninth. Uh, one thing I did fail to mention. How do I go backwards, Maureen? One of the comments, uh, from you and Maureen or Steve was to, uh, locate the existing driveway, uh, that was gonna serve, that will service Lot Four, and we have shown that, um, in this location here, which is the same location as the existing driveway is located. So that, that has been, um, identified. I've also met with the fire chief to review this location and to review, uh, access requirements for his vehicles to access, uh, Lot Four. So with that, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Bob, who will talk, um, about some of the legal-
I'm, I'm not that technically savage, so I can't do all that stuff. Um, what I did in the past three months was to work with the Delano Park Association, who owns that brown sepia line there, um, to make sure that I satisfy Delano Park with respect to the, the maintenance of that road. And we've got an agreement, which I provided, uh, Maureen with a copy, and the basis of that agreement provides for five or six provisions between the parties. Basically, it creates right title and interest in Mrs. Credo to improve that section of Delano Park Road to serve the lot and, and to basically allow us to complete the improvements that are necessary with the turnaround and the paved road and the twelve-foot wide improvements, et cetera. Uh, it also allows Mrs. Credo to do all the improvements that are required by the planning board to accomplish that, with respect to additional landscaping and drainage and everything else. Uh, Delano Park has basically given us the, the ability to go through this process and will support any conclusions that you come up with, uh, so we won't have to go back to them. The trustees of Delano Park have agreed to, um, add to the existing roadways that they maintain. The trustees of Delano Park maintain all the roadways within Delano Park. Those are all private roadways, and there's private contractors, and they've basically said that they will add the length of improvement that we make to their existing roadways. Um, they've also allowed the creation of the utility easements that John Mitchell mentioned, the water easement, it's gonna run up along that, uh, unimproved way along the edge of Lot Four, and the, uh, electric and other utility easements that are gonna now have to rerun to Lot Five, and the new ones that are gonna run to Lot Four. And, uh, there was an encroachment issue on Mrs. Credo's house, uh, which we also worked out with Delano Park, that they're gonna allow that to stay where it is. Um, as you see, it, it does come across the lot line, kind of. In addition to the agreement with Delano Park, I submitted for Maureen and the board's review, um, a deed, an easement deed, uh, which Mrs. Credo is willing to enter into with the town, that allows the town, that actually grants the ten-foot easement along her property, which if you look, I don't know if you can see it very well, John, could you point for me? It runs right around the turnaround, and then along the edge of the brown area there. The first ten feet of that, uh, area will give you the thirty-foot right-of-way required by the planning board requirements. Even though the Delano Park roadway is only twenty feet wide, we're gonna, um, basically agree that that additional ten feet will be an easement area for the benefit of the town. Um, we've agreed to maintain the pervious surface turnaround. Um, John did a very good job explaining that this, this turnaround is constructed of materials that are totally pervious, because the impervious surface ratio of Lot Five is currently non-conforming, and we don't want to increase that, we can't increase that, that impervious surface ratio. So this turnaround, even though it looks like more impervious surface, is actually less impervious surface, because the materials used are, are allowed to drain through, and, um, we don't increase the impervious surface on Lot Four. I think we have some room with respect to Lot Four for more impervious surface, but, um, we certainly don't impact it at all with, with our, our plan here. Uh, and Mrs. Credo's agreed to, to maintain that. So what we've got is, we now have, uh, a situation where we think we've got a plan that's approved by all the various town departments and the town engineer. We've got right title and interest through Delano Park. We've got Mrs. Credo agreeing to provide whatever protections the town needs to service, maintain, and, um, uh, basically allow that, um, um, new section of the road to be maintained in a, uh, consistent way with the other town approvals. And we're basically looking for completeness and then approval. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
I just have one quick question, Bob. Um, and I just wanna make sure I understood you correctly. The approvals that the trustees made are open-ended to the extent that if the board adds some requirement, that they would be amenable?
Yeah, I can, I can read you the language, but we specifically took the planning board into account.
And that's fine, that's, I just wanna clarify that.
And you have a copy of that. That, that is our intent, yep.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Okay, so the first issue we have to deal with is whether, whether this, uh, application is complete, and if it is, we should set it for a public hearing. Barbara?
I have a motion for the board to consider, um, be it, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of, uh, Jeanette, Jeanette Credo for a private accessway permit to make an existing vacant lot without frontage on a town road and located almost at the dead, at the end of Delano Park entrance number one be deemed complete. Second.
The motion having been made by Barbara and seconded by Elaine. Any debate on the motion? Hearing none, call a roll. All in favor of the motion? That's five, nothing. Motion carries. Next item we have to consider is a sidewalk.
I've been down. I've, I've already been down.
Okay. I guess I'd weigh in on, and agree with Beth. Uh, I don't think anyone, I just, I'm not discouraged.
As long as the association has agreed-
Yeah.
-to the entire situation, I don't see any particular need either.
No, I agree.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
Cause I think it'd be helpful. Um, the, the association was very helpful over the last three months. I mean, we went back and forth many different times, and I found them to be very professional and very supportive of this proposal. Um, there's Director Butters that were, that were supportive, and in general, we didn't hear one negative comment from Delano Park, which has sixty or seventy houses, which we thought was, was pretty good. So they-
Maureen, have you heard from anybody? Yes. Um, and-
Well, the comments that they've made, Maureen, um, and we haven't had a public hearing, did, do you think they might be helpful to have a sidewalk, to address some of their concerns? And I, and I know you can't necessarily account for everything, I just didn't know if you heard something specific that would say maybe a sidewalk would help us?
You know, I, I see, I see planning board member Quinn stepping up.
Oh, I was just gonna say, there was a public comment, um, submitted via email from somebody-
There was a positive comment.
-in the association. Uh, it was regarding the plantings along the new improved roadway. I didn't see it as necessarily positive.
Well, it was, please keep things as natural as possible.
I think it asked for, to remove the existing trees and put in arbor by the-
That's not what I thought.
There, you also received a comment from the fire chief this afternoon-
Yes.
Yes.
-that suggested that, um, a lot of the fact that there's insufficient water in there, he'd like to see it sprinkled.
Yeah, but going out there is not gonna help us with that.
I don't know whether it will or not.
Oh, sure, fair enough.
You, you, you may see the location, you may-
Sure.
-persuade it one way or the other. I, I mean, even if, even if you don't have a sidewalk, I mean, board members can always individually drive out there, take a look at it.
Why don't we go after the sidewalk, those of us who want to? I'll go on the sidewalk. I mean, I, I'll go.
We're either gonna call, we're either gonna call for it officially, or we're not. And then, and then frankly, after them, after anybody's free time, they can go in, go up there.
Yeah, well, you know.
Can I, can I just interrupt one comment? Uh, we have addressed, uh, the planting, um, right along here. The, the trees did have to come down because of the wider roadway.
I don't think that's much lost, though.
No, no.
Seeing those trees.
No, they're in poor condition. But we have, uh, added additional plantings, including arbor by thes.
And that's always available on the substance of plan, to talk about whether that's enough or too much, or whatever, so.
Good, thanks. I thank you for pointing that out.
Yes, yeah. And so I guess, um, to, just to, to, um- And so I guess, just to echo what Bob was asking, you know, this is somewhat unique in that it is a private neighborhood. We have received approval from the Association. And I think, I don't know, there's been a couple letters that have been-- you've met with neighbors.
Yeah, and in fact, I think the only written comment that was anything was one by Karen Harris.
Karen Harris.
Karen's actually here tonight, but she also signed the Delano Park Agreement as one of the trustees.
Yeah, I don't see that as anything that I would consider anything but saying, "Please keep things as natural as possible." Jaiho was a positive comment.
The Delano Park roads are pretty unique, and to turn them into wider two-lane roads is not something that anyone wants.
No, I don't think--
Well, I don't think any of us are thinking that it should be any wider than--
What is required--
What was needed for a-- Exactly.
And as far as the water is concerned, that's something that really would need to be discussed next time. I don't know what we're going to see there.
I have talked to the fire chief about that.
Okay.
And the fire chief has recommended a sprinkler system for--
And a new house.
For lot four.
I would comment on that, that I'm not sure that the sprinkler system is required, because I understand that they pull the water off of Shore Road, not from there anywhere. But it's going to be up to the board to decide whether--
Require--
They require a sprinkler system.
But that's not at the level of completeness, anyway.
It's exactly-- that's exactly right. But it's also an issue that is oftentimes discussed as a preferred approach, as opposed to a requirement. Obviously, a sprinkler system is expensive for anybody, so don't take that lightly with respect to requiring a sprinkler.
I would be perfectly comfortable if there isn't going to be a problem with somebody saying we didn't do our job right, going down there myself. Because I think that, given the things that we have to look at, it's not the same situation as the last situation, where we're putting a private road in. So I would be comfortable just going myself.
This isn't going anywhere. I have--
I mean, if anybody else feels we should have a sidewalk, then fine.
I think the public hearing, in my opinion, would take care of any--
But I'm going to go myself, just in case somebody stops me and tells me--
I think Glazier wants to go out.
It's a great view.
But can I make one suggestion?
Yes.
Mrs. Credo is very elderly, and there is a sign at the end of her driveway that says "private way."
Well, I would just stop out there and stop and look.
Either just do me a favor, either call me or John beforehand, just so we can call her and tell her that a car looking like yours is going to drive out there.
Okay, well, I'll see you right after this.
Okay, great, have a chance.
Okay, I'll probably go Saturday, right after the sidewalk.
I'll just mention it to her.
Fine, that would be great.
Okay. So we need to set a public hearing then?
Now we need another motion?
Yes. Barbara, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Be it further ordered that the above application be tabled to the March 17, 2009, meeting of the planning board, at which time a public hearing will be held.
Second. Motion having been made by Barbara Schenkel and seconded by Beth Richardson. Do I hear any debate on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call a roll. All in favor of the motion? Five to zero, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Wait a minute, I have one question to ask, because I don't know. That-- what looks like a road in front of the parcel number four, what is that?
Right here, Bob.
Yeah, what is that?
That's very similar to-- or it's the same as this. It's a 20-foot wide, unimproved roadway.
Oh, okay. So it's--
It's all grass.
Paper street.
So it's another paper street, and that is not long enough for frontage either? That doesn't go in--
I can answer that.
Yes.
The requirement for frontage, I believe, and Maureen can correct me, says on an improved way in the town of Cape Elizabeth. And let me borrow your pen.
Oh, and the other one's of an improved way.
I did turn it on. Hold it. All right. I think that the improved way stops right there.
Okay, that's fine.
That's why it's not long enough.
That's fine. I was just curious, because from the plan, it looks like--
Yeah.
--there should be, you know--
It is laid out, but it's not improved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. One more item before we-- I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I have discs of the PowerPoint presentations that were submitted from the Eastman Meadow folks, from the last time when they had the technical problems. So I will hand those out before the end of the meeting, and one will go into the town file. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I move that we adjourn? Second.
All in favor of the motion to adjourn? Thank you very much.